All the way up.
Hello. Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Beads and I'm a proud parent of a graduate student. We're so excited to start in the 2000s for a body oriented program. Also running toward support here at the center, but this is how it can be. I feel like my parents, I thought you all. My wife and I both want to make sure we do what it would be tennis support administration, staff, what we hear from district. What you're doing. I think I've started persuading them to have some of that. One concern I have is how we carry down after. So now I just said my job is to put in body on my. And if you know the part of the bottom plan, merge bodies with a few. So think about the merger is not likely to act for years. The formation of sound or the specific explaining how nature of the quality that it takes to pass in the body. How is used during the merger. Look, we'll take an analogy for the second. Or if it's going to build a bigger source for that. Or prepare for that and start leaving the shelves a little less stock. When they get a body, like how it's not developed. That every minute of the system is still in elementary school. Other textures better have a better practice here. Right now, we're giving the best education. Like even one year of rest is best education. Not not cut. Like a parent's effect and hopefully in a board's effect. So I'm asking the district sure as parents. Make sure your body and like how staff, well, the other building that's the organization. A public school, right? That you make sure that the learning app. But that even the traction of fucking minimum. If focus on students who are learning now, I think that's what we're looking for. But I just wanted to help did a bird for one of those. Yes, I'll be going down some of them. November, we had to make sure that the fucking plan. Don't be in the way of recording. Thank you for your time today. I really appreciate all your service for our kids. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Um, we only started. I was going to. We're very. You're ready. You're ready. Here for the long haul.
Great.
Let's. Our. Let's talk. They. All. The relationship.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Dastinoff. I represent Forest. As a chief executive officer. My background is. On behalf of the team. We're going to be taking that. To enter basic position. And. Um. I'd like to first provide some insightful or important items. I'd like to share with our company, flexing. Servancy. We believe in faith, family, loyalty. We believe in relationships and information. We contend with mediocrity in our industry. By holding ourselves to a high standard of integrity, professionals. In duty of care. We achieve this with some highly professional and experienced specialists. These business partners share our passion serving others. Forest is a multi-passed company that provides us security-related services. Including personal and privacy protection, training. Private investigations and security consulting. For the past 12 years, Forest has been providing excellent service only. To government, public and private sector. Forest is a family owned and managed by a family of unfortunate officers. Over seven years of combined experience, of which three is assigned and managing this division. We're headquartered in White Michigan. Employ approximately 45 full-time or time-prolonged employees who work in various departments. For vulnerability assessments, the chairman of the district. Safety services and investigation, active shooter preparedness and self-retrain. We are sole source capable of supporting safety. Security and supervision required. During this time of worker shortages and high demand for security. Forest is fully capable to deliver a scalable security workforce. In the ancient base school district. It is not only highly trained and equipped to handle critical incidents. But also highly sensitive to learning. The next question we have is actively unfortunate officer serving at the school, these four doctors and every school. To have retired, trying to experience the top. This is what we. Given the increase in target school bylaws. The trend is such that across the country. Supported by schools against these types of doubts. This recent FBI report that was released one month ago. Showing a 50% uptick in experience since this past meeting from 2021. So regret it real. I couldn't have been more clear in the health. At the Oxford, this school. Completely over absolutely as a chance. Um. Other than the Detroit area schools, um, who are that contact us. Others are also deploying armed attorneys. Including Oxford, Wrighton. My son with the school and Wayne, Birmingham, and Valles in the district. For servicing the volume, just a name of you. Um, others are also considering the sounding concerns. You know, the many better protecting the children. We welcome the South of City, still getting to be school. And what you think, super connected, you have to see. Is that from seeing more people spending their time. Considering our proposal. Any other questions?
Yeah.
We'll get right out. Also. A couple of questions. Those of you who are obviously wearing a week's. Like they won't be wearing them until they have. Very accessible. Or not in the general. The answer would be. Looking at my brother's address and that. Um, our. Third, yeah. Yeah, so you will go back down and sending all our employees. Just about everybody on our form alone. That the specifically selected for these basic positions to be the site. For the betterment of mental surprise. Um, no, most of them are retired, so probably they may be a different state. I think like here, I think most of them definitely want. But they don't have powers over the rest. Not able to. Other than for families, other than for families. Uh, CPR certified? Are your employees 10, 99 or definitely 14? They definitely do. They're on their own. I was kind of giving more. That's the key of our. I know it's new actually. We have several time instructors. Solid enough to go about the action for your day. We, uh, we started out pretty comfortable with unfortunate. And that's just kind of, I mean, that's very important security. How many contract you have in the school division? All we, all we have known is starting a moment, we started finding out the school district. After the obstacle present. Um, but we are trying to initiate them. Looking at contracts right now. Many other potentially. Hopefully that happens by our. So if you currently don't have any support, this is my president. Certainly. Um. If you're proud of that. You met with. Three, eight, seven, eight, seven, you got to have the. Of three. And others have kind of an union of social finance. That's based in. I just thought. Um, we have four of them that we've signed. Actually here, there was one, one just former fire. This, I didn't think. This naturally. Where you're. Here on that.
Okay, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to.
Okay, super. Finally, certainly if you could be non-language to. Or. Then. So. If you had any for the next question. What would I? The. The. Oh, yes. We will be adding one. Along with the question that was here. Well, we are certainly here today during 55, 45. So. There's three or six, about six, seven times. Our. See, for the last 11 years, you're on. Um, or maybe define right. Over here. Last year. Um, nice part of it is. Also in the. I figure. It is. Five, five. And. Third, eight. Going to be around. Five. One grade. This year's teachers are over 500. Around five. Seven, five, four. Then with retirement, this is. Basically, we have. Early retirement is made up for higher years. Legitimate. So. If it's three guns, once we've been fully established. Then hey, if you either add that. Or. Uh. So, sir, we are now. We are all for the. And five. Um, we are really trying to work our four. Positions. Right now, our focus is on school to share the class. So thankfully, we had to give that. To. Something that I do. There. For. And then we are. For. Or if you're. Or if you're not, we go with our. You're off. And we want to do it this morning. Um, that our schedule. Today, so we'll give you the last. Yeah, thank you. I was there. Um. I would. Overall. They've ensured. Kind of. Um. The life. Building even greater. L E T. So they. With that. And. As well. You've done it. For. For. And. We're going along. Now. We also hope this group is further. I should be reading. Our law. Thank you, Claire. Share. You walk. We point at the. First couple of purposes, one. They. Also, they also were. And. Especially if we get it. Last. Basically, for 82. Was that we probably do that in a year. We're going to fill. And all of that. Then. Very. Well, a bit. This is. Come. Give you. Quick ones. Uh. I'll be. Uh, I. Everything. Hey, do you want to use that? I'd be glad. For. Well. Pardon. On. Perfect. Well, that's. We'll know. There. Um. During the process. You can. Or barriers. Now we are. A. Relation. So. It's. The. Off. We're hoping that. Later. Education. Is. Although. It is something. True. Um. To be. Perfect. In addition. On the. People. By sleeping, you can tell there. It's a state of the picture. Um. Same place. But they're still leaving. Free. And if we met. The roof, we don't think this is. And. Down there. You met. Basically, you can use. Something that's based off. And they showed. So all those actions that were affected by that. Certain organizations. And it's a. Of. All. This is from. They showed. It's really great. Something that you did there. Um, they were having a fair. We were actually over to the panel. They walked through. How it is blind. To. Have worked. Did you? So. For. After. After. Art. Um. What. That's. All. We're all. The other part of the day, after the last year, where it was one. We're. Playing. Open. And I was really sort of looking at. The last. Um, with the break. During the last year, when I was. In. That's. It was really. Quite sad. Double. The picture got forward. I think. Think that. Want to remind you of the main goal today is by. Perfect. For. Sorry. You're on one. And. Then. One. Yeah. And if you ever. The other. Okay.
Um, we'll have a.
We only have one. Change. Or other. People notice. God. There's a lot of. For. Target. Maybe. They went ahead. Over. Before. Um, I mean, I was. Yeah, so.
Yes. Moving to the next agenda. I'm going to see my agenda. The. Brazil of the. And the part of. Third, the meeting. Personal report. National report. Those. Their motion.
Okay.
Yes, this is great.
Yes.
For.
Yeah.
Looking at new business, we have the acne. You have a special region, HPA, with the acne. That was approved by the union membership, this is a six-year deal. That informs of the guidelines that are set by the board of education. With the recommendation that the board approves the DNA of the members. And motion. Motion to find this task. The defendant, Richard. Yes. Richard. For.
Yes.
Great. Good. That. Next. We have the. May I ask you 2022. If the care professional. Had a different ministry, the administration, we gave the care professional. And that was the providing challenge. This is a three-year deal that informs of the guidelines that the board. The recommendation to school through CP to care professional. And.
I'll make that. I just want. First. You guys. I'll go. We're going to. Last.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, yeah. That's fair. Richard. Motion to ask this. Ready. Thank you very much. How is this supposed to be? I can ask the 2026 delegates and families. So the mission of the situation, school board, member of the family, we can serve the actual. One and seven. Threat of the source. Eligites expected by the board, the top state. Side. On the line. And they. All delegates. All. All. The board. Or we need to be. That was. Yeah.
So I didn't have it last year. It was nice. It's. I think. Well, I've had it over. Through probably. Much so through here. They. I'll. I'll put. But. So. You guys.
Yeah.
I will make those.
Okay. So.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. For. Um. Next, we have. I'm going to. But here because the people class. Get school. So. Just reading the situation of the reading of four classes. That's longer elementary. For the recognition of the board to use the classroom. Very.
Oh, my God.
That's them. The discussion. Great.
Yes.
That's that. For. For. Factors. Uh, we have the twenty twenty two, twenty three school. Price and recognition. Michigan Department of Education requires district to revise school one. Twenty two point one was provided by the school. The board determines. The school district is required within thirty one. I think for the problem. Year. Taking the school. One, two, median average price calculator. Caused by district. To increase one price for twenty two twenty three. To. Three dollars per student. Back. Anyone?
Hello.
Mr. Congressman. Have we ever? Why?
So basically, it's either reverse or. A girl. Three, one. You have to check that. Part of this. Last year. It's all funded. Right. Feel that. Really dreadful. This year, we are. The sound line. It's. Will be three dollars. Did it. Uh. Some research. For most of it. For. Second there. Three dollars. The only thing I'll add. I just got to look back. Number. Pretty hopeless. This is. Of course, the station. Really.
Great.
Yes.
Senator. Um, that. Okay. Yeah. So. This is. Very. Now, we see. I am. Also, that's a. Super. And. The application. It's. They salary. And one. And we. Your. I. Created. Power. The application. For.
Oh, my.
Thank you.
This is a great. I appreciate. I was very. Uh, thank you. It was a pretty quick meeting discussion. It's. So what? One. And you mentioned. Did you? Uh. Pretty proud. Well. Well.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Uh, yeah. President. Good. Uh, next. Or.
It's worth it. Intervene sports teachers. Uh, here. Our. Football. Mobile. By. I'm. I'd like to thank all staff that's. In a. On. Think that they offer the speed. School program. Beyond. The double. Correction orientation is what they are. So I'm assigned to. Citizen. Public. This. September. The third. Intervene is now hiring for a staff program. Are moving. Of. My favorite place is. They can. That is. And before the union. Staff. Can. Our. That. The. One. Five. Six. And a B.
My. Comment. It's compared to the community. Parents. Were involved. With a lot of. Community. Um. Graduating. So. They're coming. Three, four year old people. There's so much. To be there. And the more we get involved, the better. You can. That. Teachers and. Federation. That's putting. Free. For. I'm sure. First. Football. Maybe this forum. Uh, we also. Graduation. Because of. Dallas. Who are. Will. From. Both. How. Ways of. That it will be. Getting that at the back. And. Well, hopefully, we. As a. Summer. After. And. We. See you all. Day. And I'm. I would listen to you. I. That's wonderful. A hard. Clear. And a face. Clear. And. That's. Beautiful. And. Great. Day. And enjoy. Yes. Back.
I want to. Once. The one thing that I want to. Press is not possible. Did you hear my question? Was true. And. Certain. Um. Having. You are. School. From the things. The one. My parents. Do. So the reason there was no vote. When I. Say the thing. For. All. But I wanted. And out there in public. Looking. I want to represent all. Our. He's good. Principal. I want everybody to have a chance to weigh in. So it was a. Eight. When. That being. We could talk about. Basically, that being is. Superior. Is having. I have a thinking. But I want to hear. I want to hear. I want. On this. And my. Irving. We need to. This. Forward. So please. Not expect. This. This is local. Or. If you can. Please email. Any of your concerns. House. You will share those with the rest of the board. Or. Don't want to have a vote like today. Then that. We come into school. And play with it. Why is there a guy walking around? I. Over. I wanted to do that. Our. Pretty difficult. So. And. They also. I. Me. And. I turn. Almost. Away. So. These. I'm. Can. And. Now. This. This. Outside. No, we're going to do. What? Why? I. Right. Oh. I will be. Now.
We're presenting. The only work. That's not at this point. Meaning. But I just believe regarding.
Did we? We did talk about the budget. Yes. The policy. A lot. Two hours.
That is all we have for tonight. So.
For.